At this time, I will call the January 4th, 2024 Des Moines City Council Meeting to Order. I will lead us in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please let the record show that Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Nutting have all been sworn in before tonight's meeting. With that, let the record show that all councilmembers are present. Now, we will have the swearing, the ceremonial swearing-in. Let the record note that Councilmember Harris opted out of the ceremonial swearing-in. Now, I will call Councilmember Nutting to the podium.
I, Jeremy Nutting.
I, Jeremy Nutting.
Having been duly elected.
Have been duly elected.
To the office of?
To the office of.
City of Des Moines.
City of Des Moines.
Position number four.
Position number four.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of this office.
Of this office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
And to the best.
And to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the state of Washington.
Of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
At this time, I will be accepting nominations for mayor for 2024 to 2025. Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yes, I nominate Deputy Mayor Tracy Buxton.
Councilmember Buxton, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, see and then I will close. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Harris?
Yes, I am nominating myself.
And I'm assuming you accept it? Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. When I call your name, let me know which councilmember you will be voting for, for the position of mayor. Position number one, Councilmember Steinmetz. Position two, Miss Councilmember Harris.
J.C. Harris.
Oh. Position three, I wrote the wrong name. Position three, Jean Oxner.
Thank you. Yes, I'm voting for Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Position number four, Councilmember Nutting.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Councilmember Buxton. Position five.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Position number six, Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Deputy Mayor Tracy Buxton.
Position number seven, Councilmember Mahoney.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
With a vote of six to one, congratulations, Mayor Buxton. I will turn the meeting over to you now.
Thank you. Thank you, so I think there will be a time for a deep breath and some comments a little bit later in the meeting, so we're moving forward here. To the selection of Deputy Mayor. We're gonna move forward in the same process that we just had, first, first taking nominations. So, are there any nominations?
I have one.
Go. Thank you. I'm used to, somebody else calling on me.
I nominate Councilmember Steinmetz.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz, do you receive this nomination?
I accept.
Thank you, any other nominations? Councilmember Grace Matsui?
I nominate Councilmember Oxiker.
Councilmember Oxiker, do you see this nomination?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, any other nominations? Councilmember Harris.
I nominate myself.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris, and I'm assuming, same that you received that nomination, any other nominations? All right, I will move forward, calling on each of you, one at a time, for a verbal vote. Oh, do any of you have some statements? I'd like to offer that opportunity, if any of you have a statement that you would like to say before we take the vote. Councilmember Harris.
I do have a statement. Thank you. I am vying for this position because I believe I am best qualified. The position requires a certain level of skill, experience, and frankly, time. Only a few of us have experience, both with a broad spectrum of city issues and regional issues. If we're being honest, only a few of us have the time to do the almost never-ending number of routine tasks. I understand it may sound harsh, but I'm not sure anyone with a day job can do full justice to either leadership office as currently configured. And we should look at that. I believe that all of you should be assigned to committees and tasks you express an interest in, obviously matching your skills, but not for any high-minded reason, but because I think the city runs better with everyone used to best advantage. I would hope to work to dial back the offices of both leadership positions to what they used to be, essentially people who ran meetings fairly and worked to achieve consensus from a broad set of viewpoints, helping others to shine rather than themselves. I want to make those administrative improvements because I believe that transparency, better information, and above all, attracting more people into public life should be our top priority. We simply cannot afford to leave talent on the table in a small town and at this pivotal moment, either on the council or in the community. I also believe this approach is the best way to choose the next city manager because we must attract the highest quality city manager. I was told by someone at MRIC years ago that the success of a city manager could be gauged by their length of tenure. I'm not sure I agree with that, but I believe that longevity often tracks with obvious competence and fairness. In other words, if the CEO is perceived as having those qualities regardless of ideology, they tend to last. I feel like the best way to attract and select a city manager who will last is to have a council that operates in that same manner, and that is what I hope to achieve through fairness, transparency, and data-driven decision-making. Setting aside all the blather about misinformation over the past few years, you know in your hearts, that is my goal. In closing, I represent a sizable constituency, as do all of you. And the point of council manager government is to respect all constituencies. I value each of your talents and would do my best to enable you to further the issues you care about most as one of seven because I believe that the office should only be about leadership to the extent that it helps the entire body move forward via a consensus that all seven of us can feel good about. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. After that, would anybody like to use your name, do you have a statement you'd like to make? All right, we'll move forward with the vote. I, since I don't have the seat numbers, I'm just gonna go from right to left. So, Councilmember Oxiker, how do you vote? Councilmember Nutting, how do you vote?
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Councilmember Mahoney, how do you vote?
Councilmember Steinmetz.
I did not go in the order that I said. Councilmember Steinmetz, how do you vote?
For myself, thank you.
Councilmember Harris, how do you vote? And Councilmember Grace Matsui, how do you vote?
Jean Oxiker.
So, with two votes for Councilmember Oxiker, three votes for Councilmember Steinmetz, and one vote for Councilmember Harris, I am not sure if we go to the majority or if we take the two highest votes and re-vote again. Oh. I vote for Councilmember Steinmetz, that's four for Councilmember Steinmetz, and you are now the new deputy mayor, so welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is correspondence. So, City Clerk, do we have any correspondence not previously received by the council?
We have none.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. So, it's now time for comments from the public. We ask that you keep your comments respectful, and please recognize that any person speaking or acting in a way that's disruptive to the meeting will be removed. You will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and your city of residence when you come to the podium. Do we have anyone who's signed up to speak? Thank you so much. I have Charlene Bacalzo.
Good evening, councilmembers, newly elected or appointed mayor elected, and our new interim city manager. I'm standing here today with a thank you. A thank you to my city who recognized my despair. What happened at my place of business here in town was a homeless person set it on fire. It was deemed unintentional arson, but it still equals arson. And I'm still shut down since December 6th. I'm fortunate to have a church that was able to facilitate us staying open and available to our clients, that many of them are residents of the city of Des Moines. So, I thank you for your interest in me. When I reached out remembering, because I've been active this last year, remembering our storefront restoration project when many of our businesses were hit by rocks and broken windows, I reached out to the city, and those funds have pretty much been exhausted, and yet, our interim manager suggested giving me a thousand dollars. And so, I'm here to thank you for that. And that will be now going towards security cameras. So, thank you very much, and I will continue to support our city and our new council. Thank you.
Charlene. What's the name of your business?
Public Jeffers Childcare.
Thank you. So, do we have anyone who is not signed up but wishes to speak tonight? Okay. The next item.
I'll call it three times.
I don't think you have to call this three times. It's not a public area. So, there's no consent calendar tonight, which brings us to new business. Oh, is there? I'm so glad I have so much help up here. This is so nice.
Mayor, at the next meeting, you'll be sitting here, so I can just.
That's the secret, yeah.
Mayor, that's why I appeared like I knew what I was doing.
Yeah, and I'm gonna need to get some chiropractic adjustment after all of this tonight, too, so. So, thank you so much. Turn this over to City Manager George for briefings or presentations that we have prepared, thank you.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to note for the council and the public, tonight's a very light agenda, but next week, we have a lot of things on the agenda, we'll be releasing that packet tomorrow. But on the agenda for next week, we have the creation of the Finance Committee, which the council made the motion for last year. We will be addressing the city's legislative priorities because the state legislative session opens next week, and we will also be discussing the requests for proposals for the city manager recruitment firm. So, a very busy meeting next week. Tonight is very light, but at this time, I'll call up our Finance Director Jeff Friend for his 2023 third quarter financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Happy New Year. Jeff Friend, Finance Director, with the third quarter finance report. The full report can be found in tonight's packet and also on the city website on the Finance Department page where there's a link for budget and reports. It's quite a full report, this is very much highlights of that, so if you're interested in more details, I'd encourage you to look at the full report. We're gonna begin with the general fund. These past reports have generally been exclusively about the general fund, but tonight, we're gonna talk about more than just the general fund. Through September 30th of last year, we have our revenue and expenditures of the general fund. The bar on the left, of course, is revenue, the one on the right is expenditures. The amounts above those columns, the 24,809 and the 27,246 is the annual budget. And I do wanna note that that is not the amended budget, but the original adopted budget. The budget was amended in the fourth quarter, so we show that in the fourth quarter. The green under revenue shows the amount of revenue collected, which was about 17.8 million, and remaining in the budget is about 6.9 to be collected for the year of 2023. Expenditures are 20, about 20 and a half million dollars in the green section on the right, leaving about 6.7 million dollars remaining of the original budget of the 27.2. We're also gonna talk about fund balance. Typically, we'd end the report talking about fund balance, but fund balance has been a central topic throughout the budget process last year while creating the 2024 budget. So, I thought it would be more apropos to start with the fund balance. So, the ending fund balance for the general fund at the end of 2022 was 7.7 million dollars, just a little bit over that, representing 31.3% of recurring operating expenditures. And as we've discussed in the past, city code requires 16.67% of required recurring operating expenditures. The reasoning being that if something happens, such as COVID or some event such as that, we'd have at least two months of funds to cover expenditures. At the end of September 30th, the ending fund balance was a little over 5.1 million dollars, representing 18.8% of recurring operating expenditures. Please note, this is the third quarter, and in the third quarter, we do not receive property tax. We receive that in the second and the fourth, so it's typical in the first and third quarters of the year for that fund balance to drop down a little bit lower than we'd like. This chart actually puts everything into context as far as the discussions we've been having during the budget process. This is the 10-year trend of the general fund's fund balance going back to 2014. The blue fun, sorry, the blue line is the actual fund balance at year-end for those years, and the green is the 16.67%. So, you can see back in 2014, the city was well below that number, and then, of course, rises up quite a bit by 2017, and then, through the pandemic, stays above 16.67%. But you'll notice at quarter three in 2023, that's, those lines are getting very close together. And so, that's why it's been such a topic of discussion through budgeting because with that kind of a situation, we're close to that 16.67%, and we'd like to stay, you know, have a comfortable margin above that. At September 30th, these are the general fund revenue and expenditures. The green bars are revenue categories. The black vertical line between the 70% and 80% represents being 75% through the year. And each revenue category is ranked by its contribution to the general fund throughout a typical year. So, property taxes is our top revenue source, and you can see that that's quite a bit below the 75% because, again, we don't collect that much in the third quarter, but in the fourth quarter, that should be up on budget. Utility taxes were a little bit below 75%. Sales tax was pretty much on target. BNO taxes, a little bit low, below budget, but doing well when compared to past trends. And I do wanna mention also with BNO taxes, I heard some, when you get good news in finance, you wanna share it, especially when you're in challenging times. But when finance took over the BNO tax process, I think paper filers were about 80% of our filers. Now, revenue has grown, and those paper filers are down to 26%. So, we went from 80% paper filers down to 26%. So, I think the business community is getting used to the online payment portal and getting comfortable with it, and we're seeing a lot of progress as far as collecting BNO taxes. Franchise fees is healthy, being over 80% of budget, and traffic light safety, formerly known as red light running, is steady, being under, just barely under 75%. And then, operating expenses are right there at 75.1%. Also, in prior reports, we've gone into the weeds a bit on those revenue categories, but I think for this report, we wanna look at expenditures a little bit much because there's a lot in that one line. So, I thought that was worth taking a look at and focusing on. So, these are expenditure categories, or expenditures by the year from 2020 to now. The green, darker green on the left is the annual budget, and the turquoise-colored bar on the right represents the actual expenditures. You can see that each year, we've been under budget, which is good because if we're not, we will get a finding from the state auditor's office. But the actual trend, you can see, we typically have general fund expenditures that are between 20 and 25 million dollars. The 2023 on the end there, that's only three quarters, so that'll be a larger amount, of course, at the end of the fourth quarter. But you can see 21, 22, and probably 23, an upward trend in expenditures. Here's the expenditures by budget category. So, you can see, the different categories are personnel, supplies, services, internal services, capital, and transfers out. So, the large category is, of course, personnel, that's about 67% of the general fund budget for expenditures. That light blue line is the prior year of 2022's actuals at this point in time, so that'd be September 30th, 2022. And then, the yellow and green are 2023, the yellow being the year-to-date budget for 2023, and the green being the year-to-date actuals for 2023. So, you can see, especially with personnel, it's at budget, but quite a bit more than the prior year. As far as the other category, services is the next largest, a little bit below budget, but pretty much in trend with the prior year. So, as far as the increase in personnel cost, the report does address that in a bit more detail. I don't wanna pick on any one police department. Because it's not just police, no, they did have a new contract that got signed and implemented, and there are some costs related to that, but there's also an 8% COLA for nonrepresented employees. So, there is a lot of, there's different factors involved in that that increased it to the extent that it was. Cash and investments for the general fund, this is a list of our investments for the different bonds we have, so Federal Farm Credit Bank, Federal Home Loan Bank, Federal Home Loan Mortgage Bank. We're required to be conservative with our investments because we can't put the public's money at risk. The last two lines there are KeyBank, which is our bank account, and the local government investment pool that's with the state of Washington. So, you can see, our bond investments are a little under 60% of our cash. The LGIP is about 33%, a little over 33%, and then, our KeyBank is about 7.7%. So, the beginning of the year, we had a little, about 50 and a half million dollars, and it decreased about $2 million to about 48 and a half million. This is called a ladder, so just as when you make investments, you make, you invest in different investment vehicles because you don't wanna put all your eggs in one basket, you also do the same thing as far as when those investments mature because you don't wanna have everything mature at the same time, and you're a prisoner of the interest rate at that time. So, this shows the maturities that we have coming up from October of '23 through September of 2026. That last one is the most recent investment we made, and we were able to lock in about, I think it's over a yield of 5% and lock it in for three years when our broker felt like interest rates are gonna be declining. So, that was why that one's so far out as far as the others. The other thing to note is 2024 time period has a number of maturities, so we're making decisions on, you know, reinvesting or putting in the LGIP or not, so. Other funds. The Development Fund, this is a quick look at their operating revenue and expenditures and their total operating income. So, they were budgeted to have an operating income loss of about a million dollars. Their year-to-date actual, they've had a year, operating loss of only 515,000, so they're doing about 485,000 better than they were budgeted to do. But there's still losses, so that's not great, but at least they're doing better than this budget, at least through September. The American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act Fund, I left the word "plan" out of there. These are the projects that are still active, they have not been completed. So, you can see SCORE, it still has about 19,000 remaining. We just paid that in December, so that should close that one out. Marina redevelopment, community presentation materials, Redondo space lease. So, a number of these, such as the police officers, will probably wind up, close out in 2024. And another important aspect of the ARPA funds for this year is that they need to be obligated by the end of the year, or we would potentially lose the funds. So, that being obligated means we have contracts in place. So, we'll make sure that that happens. We have about 4.2 million remaining as of September 30th. Real estate excise tax. This is not a fun chart. So, this is a five-year trend going back to 2019. You can see it. You can see it declines from 2019 to 2020, and then increases in 2021. That increase, if you remember, in the housing market, there were, was a time it was so competitive that people were buying houses without even having them inspected. So that's when the market was hot. Since that time, we've had inflation, and we have had 7% mortgage rates. So you can see the decline in 2022 into 2023. In fact, the, from 2022 to 2023, there's about 100, over 100, probably about 130 fewer transactions in real estate in the city of Des Moines than the previous year. So that's, is a very real impact, and so that would be something that we have to keep an eye on, is the funds from the real estate excise tax are used to fund capital projects. The Marina Fund, this shows the operating income and the nonoperating income and their change in unrestricted net position. So their budget was, in total, through September, there would be a loss of $249,000. Not so much a loss from operations, but the nonoperating piece is, you know, that's capital work when they're spending money on projects. Year-to-date actual, they're actually, in the black, $735,000, so they're doing almost $1 million better than budgeted through September. Surface water management, this is the same chart with their operating income, nonoperating income, and their net change in net position. So they were budgeted through September for a loss of 1.2 million, and their actual is, they're in the black, $760,000. And I would comment also that the surface water rates that we collect, it's like property tax, we collected in April and October because it's paid with your property tax bill. So being at the end of September, we've only had the one big chunk of collections for the year in October, in the fourth quarter, you know, we'll make that up. Okay, the last slide, just want to give an update on what finance is working on currently. So currently, we have a state, the state auditors here auditing our 2022 financial statements now that the year's closed, 2023 has ended, so we're working on closing out 2023 and creating the 2023 financial statements. This is the first time I've ever been audited on financial statements while creating the other ones that follow it, but also business license renewals and annual BNO tax filings is, that's a busy time of year with those. And then we're also going to be be planning and are planning the 2025 budget process. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any questions? Councilmember Steinmetz, then Councilman. Thank you, you got me. I just learned that from you. Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Buxton. Yeah, Jeff, I want some help understanding a little bit, because when I look at the the front page here, you know, it kind of looks like there's about a $2.5 million iceberg out there waiting to crap, waiting for us to crash into, the difference between them. And then you kind of went on and talked about property taxes coming in in the fourth quarter. Is that going to make up that difference? Or are we really in danger at this point of not meeting that 16% because we're going to go below it?
Okay.
Maybe I don't understand how they all interact well enough, so please educate.
Well, I'd start with the 2023 budget, budget's about $2.5 million more expenditures than revenue. So that's kind of where you start. And so, and where we started was at about $7.7 million of fund balance. So if you budget $2.5 million more expenditures than revenue, you're going to drop down to about 5.2 million. As far as the property tax goes, it's a boost, but it's one piece. And so while we get that revenue coming in, which is substantial for us, we still have expenditures going on at the same time. And so you, yeah, you kind of feel, you're going to be closer to 15 or 16.67% than you were at the beginning of the year. Hopefully, we're around 20%. I think there's a cushion there. But yeah, that's, that's why it was a topic through the budget process, because it's a big concern to be that close to 16.67%. If that, does that help, or?
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then the the other question is, and this is third quarter, so this was September. We're talking about this in January, although it was on last week's, or like the December, end of the year, December agenda. Can we get these faster? What is, what's needed to speed the process up so that we have these numbers quicker?
I would say you can get them quicker. I did pull it because I wasn't pleased with the report and the consistency of the data. And so we're taking more care to review, you know, what's in the report. But part of the reason for that was I was rushing to get it in before the end of the year, but it was more important to get it right.
And Jeff, can I just know for you? Finance is working fourth quarter on the budget, and so, you know, maybe other quarters might be done quicker as far as the reports go, but our, our third, during our fourth quarter, we're working on budget, so, you know, compiling this information kind of takes a backseat.
Yeah, the fourth quarter report will probably be presented, it has historically been presented in July. The state requires it be presented before July 31st, and the reason they give you that cushion is because you're closing out the end of the year. Our guidance for the fourth quarter that I've given my staff is, it's going to be guided by having a final lockdown fund balance number for the general fund. I'm hoping that's going to be in May, so hopefully it'll be sooner. I think every year we do do it a little quicker. Yeah, so I think also, the second piece of that is we also have a more formalized month-end closing schedule that'll help us get these numbers in. But part of it is also, you know, waiting for all the invoices to go through and all that kind of thing, so there is a delay. But yeah, optimally, this would have been delivered in December, or even a little bit sooner, but, you know, there's, like Tim mentioned, there's a budget and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, and I, and I get the workload issue there, so, you know, I'm, that I, I just kind of want to understand that a little bit better, and I want everybody else to understand it. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Well, first of all, it's hard, you know, I'm trying not to offer to wax your car, but I want you to understand my appreciation just for printing this out. And also, the presentation is just, it's much better. There is information here that has not been presented in this manner, and it's extremely helpful. So, yeah, faster, you know, but I just want to acknowledge the, my questions, and these are more, you know, comment or not, or just nod and I'll move on, but I'm noting that, you know, the decrease in REIT is a funny thing to me, because, you know, you want neighborhood stability. You want people to live here for a while, you know, there are values to that, but then it's also a perverse incentive that the more sales, the more we get over, right? So how does one, you know, any thoughts on that at this moment, or is it something you?
Well, being that we do rely on REIT for some projects, I, I root for a healthy real estate market, but I can't really.
I know, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there because it's a real tension in, in my view. You know, you want people to live here a good while, but.
Yeah, it is kind of a paradox, because you get the REIT from people selling, and it goes into projects that would make people want to live here. So, yeah.
And I'm also struck by, you know, when I started watching, utility taxes were kind of a gleam, you know, they were there now. I'm noticing there's almost a par between property tax and sales tax and utility taxes. And, you know, any comment on, just as a long-term kind of a thing? I mean, I'm, I'm older, you know, I'm old, and I'm used to thinking of property tax as being like two-thirds of the structural money. And is that something, I don't know, you know, that's, that's just going to be the thing now, right? Or?
Yeah, I think my concern is not property tax, because I would think that's pretty stable, that the properties in the city have value and growing value. For the most part, sales tax is one where I get concerned that we get a little comfortable with it growing, when an economic downturn that's out of our control can hit that, especially since I worked in Tukwila when the, when the pandemic hit, and that's their number-one revenue source. So that's the one that kind of makes me more concerned than the others. Utility taxes will probably grow, those, you know, those tend to go up.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to think of it in terms of just, okay, what's the, you know, what's the healthy diet? And I guess last, but, you know, comment or not, but it might be good to, every once in a while, I just ask for no particular purpose, what is the, what is the reason behind having a 16.67% general fund? Like, why is it a good, what is the intrinsic good to it? What's it used for?
Well, I would say that, as I stated in the presentation, it ensures you have at least two months of funds to cover, if a disaster hits or something, you can cover your expenses for two months. I would prefer to be a bit higher than 16.67%, because I think that's healthier. But the code says 16.67. I view it as a floor, but, you know, that's, at least you'd have two months to get by. I think that's the thinking behind it.
Okay, thanks for indulging me, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Are you guys doing anything, I mean, honestly, the retail, we've talked about REIT and stuff like that in the real estate market. Is there any analysis, or do you guys get resources to monitor construction costs and mortgage rates? Because those really are the killers of this type of situation, just to be on the pulse of it.
Well, we get, I mean, we get the data from the state, like, as far as retail sales tax, we get, we get that two months after the fact. So we receive the funds like in October for what was earned in August, but we don't have anything too in detail beyond that. Yeah, so I, I mean, we get the data after the fact, so we're not really ahead of the curve.
I just didn't know if you had any relationships with some of the banking or somebody like that, that you might get that, or you had a particular person on staff that managed or monitors, kind of a watchdog?
No, not necessarily.
I, you know, obviously, in, in our revenue source, we really have a three-legged stool. It's the, you know, sales and use tax, the property tax, and now the utility tax has become, and I think the utility tax was probably the one that was, where there was a discussion about people thought, why should we have it and everything? But would you agree that, especially during COVID, it was probably one of the most stable things we had?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. And then the sales and use tax, so it's one of those things where, I know some laws were changed on the revenue source that it was, because it used to be, if you bought something from Amazon, from Kent, and it was shipped to Des Moines, Kent got all the taxation. There was supposed to be a division there. Is there a way to identify that? Because we don't have the big box stores or the, the cars, I mean, car lots and things like that, like a lot of other, other cities do. So we rely on a consistent sales and use tax, and that seems to be one of the newer forms of it. So I was just wondering if there's a way to identify how much that is.
As far, I'm sorry, how much it is?
How much would be the, would be directly related to online sales and that tax cut we never used to get, that we do get some? And I worry about it, and I, and I'm going to add this before you answer, I do worry about it because a lot of times it's set on the city, and how many of us have received even from our US government on the census where 98198 was associated to Seattle?
Right, and mentioning my time in Tukwila, that was a concern for them as well. And we had to research it, and what, talking to the state, we found that even if the, the written-out address said Seattle, and it's really a different city, it goes by GIS codes, so it doesn't actually go by that. So if it's Amazon and it ships to a location in Des Moines, but the address might say Seattle, it would still come to Des Moines.
I, I knew we had some utility taxes, or utility that was going to Seattle, so I just didn't know if it was, so that's reassuring. But it is, but the real question with all that nonsense I just told you was, are we, do we have a way to capture what that is and what that impact is, that specific sales and use tax on, on sale there, or is it all kind of covered into what would be the other associated tax?
Yeah, they have, when we get the data of sales tax, there's codes for different categories, which is summarized in the chart. So if it's Amazon, that most likely would be under just the retail sales. So, and it's, like you said, it's, it's a destination, when the sales tax is calculated, it's not from where it ships, it's like.
Okay. And, and the reason why I'm asking you this is as we move on, and we're going to have a finance committee and so forth, we're going to be looking for a different source of revenue that minimize the impact to our residents. And, you know, with the, with our habits doing that, it's like, how mu, you know, what is, like, have we seen an increment increase over time? Can we expect that? That kind of thing is what I'm looking at, because I think it'll be a piece of how we evaluate with, you know, cost of goods and interest rate, interest or inflation and labor costs and so forth. We've got to combat it with kind of cap property taxes and utility taxes being the same, so I'm looking at sales and use for opportunities where I might be able to find them, that's all. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. So what you're saying is, if you're trying to decide whether you should go to the mall or stay home on the couch and buy something, stay home on the couch and you can support your city?
Well, it's a consideration which I'm conflicted, as you well know.
Right.
Because I, actually, I want you to shop both places and a lot.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Harris, for your second time.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me, is it, does anybody else have a question before I call on Councilmember Harris for a second time? Yes, Councilmember Grace Masui.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I did want to go back to a question that my colleague, Councilmember Harris, had about that mix of revenue, and if there is somewhat of a guidance around that healthy balance in terms of where they come in. While I understand that it's very tempting to rely on things like utility taxes to balance your budget, they're also very regressive in nature and actually have a bigger impact on our citizens and residents here than property taxes. And so looking in long term, I'm wondering if that balance needs to shift, if that's something that the Budget Committee can take on.
Yeah, I think the utility taxes in particular, and Tim can correct me, is part of franchise fee agreements, so is that not correct?
Some of them are.
Some of them are.
Some of them are just by code.
Well, which is why I was getting to, I think it reflects council priorities. And so if there's going to be a tax decrease because the council feels it's regressive and wants to make a shift, that would be something a finance committee can talk about, and, you know, the council can lead in that direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So going back to Councilmember Mahoney, and this is, I'm just, can the city subscribe to something like MLS listings? Because I, I look at those, my buddies at, you know, different real estate firms, and they have all kinds of little stats about, you know, you know, days on market and just, they, they have all kinds of very hyper-local trends, like literally down to the block. And I'm just wondering if there's a way we can spend a couple hundred bucks and get that information, and if it would be of. information and if it would be of some kind of value. Um, you know, maybe not, but, um, it, I, it's always very interesting to me to be able to just, it's like, oh, okay, they have a very good idea, that pulse of what's, what kind of revenue is coming down the pike. And, um, it's always interesting to me. It seems like they, they know and they get it from those reports. So, just throwing it out there.
There could be possibly some research done. I don't know if we have to subscribe or not, but, um...
Well, it's just because it's like super easy. In other words, it's not hours of work. It's like you look at the screen and it just gives you this dashboard and you, you know, and you just go, oh, wow, on those three blocks, I know what's happening.
Um, I would say also, in addition to that, um, when we do get the REIT report from, um, King County, it lists every transaction. So I can also look at that and see, oh, this is what's selling and this is, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, I'm just looking for something that's easy for you. That's all, that's really all.
It's actually fun for me.
What's that?
It's actually fun for me to look at that.
I, I, and me too, but there are only so many hours in a day.
Right.
And the other thing, um, and just for, again, for grins, I'm wondering if we have some map that indicates like how much, you know, like just would show land based on what's taxable and what's tax exempt, essentially what we have to play with. Um, you know, I mean, yeah, you can look at a, a comp plan and so on, but, um, just anything that said, here's, here's where you could build on, or here's what's generating revenue for the city and here's what's not.
You mean, as far as property tax or what kind of tax? Property tax? Um, well, the King County Assessor, they, you can actually look, you know, online at each plot in the city and see.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I know. I'm just saying, just, you know, if you had a meeting, it might be fun to just have that kind of summary and that's it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other questions? All right, Jeff. Great. Thank you for the presentation. So City Manager George, is there another component to your, uh, the City Manager Report?
That is all I have tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So now we would, we actually would move to the consent calendar if there were one and, uh, but there aren't tonight. There is no consent calendar tonight, which does bring us to new business, unless I'm missing something. No? Okay, good. Smiles over there. Uh, so that brings us to new business. And, uh, this is a time for purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda that also have not been previously before the council. This is not a time for questions about old business. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members have any business they would like to, business, new business items they would like to propose? All right then. Oh, excuse me. Thanks.
I was pausing.
No worries. Councilmember Grace Matsui, go ahead.
Thank you. I know many of us or all of us received an invitation from, uh, a local group, um, asking for a proclamation to, uh, acknowledge the Korean-American Day and celebration that's coming up in the next week. And I would like to, uh, raise the issue of whether or not we can have a proclamation ready by next week. I know the timing is, uh, less than desirable to try and get it out since their event is coming up on the 13th.
Do, uh, okay, well, I did write a note about that. So I'm going to give my input on this and then ask for more input. Uh, I think that the process and decision-making parameters that we have for proclamations would be a good discussion, maybe at a study session. What, uh, what items could we bring forward? If we decided that we, just throwing this out, made proclamations for days, proclamation days, there could be hundreds of them, right? And this is a fantastic event that they're throwing. And so I'm also encouraged to find out that, uh, all councils, it looks like all council members did receive that invitation. So, which does invite us to participate in that, um, in that event. So I'm open to this, the discussion. I wonder if it's part of a bigger discussion that might be better in another, um, like at a study session or an agenda discussion. Does it, uh, another raised hand? Go.
I think both of us raised our hand.
Were you raising?
Yeah, we both did, but it always looks like I'm raising.
I know, I'm like, that's, so Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
I yield the floor to Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Steinmetz, there. Um, yeah, two, um, uh, two thoughts.
Okay.
One is I agree with your point that we don't really have a process for the proclamations. Uh, and it's difficult to see them coming in time to do anything other than, you know, what's being proposed tonight. Uh, you know, can we get something ready by next week? The, the contributions of, uh, of the Korean community, uh, and as many of you know, my son just came back from Korea, having spent a semester abroad there. Um, you know, the, that's a pretty special thing, at least in my eyes, and, and worth acknowledging. Um, so although I, we don't have the process right now, um, I'd appreciate the interim city manager giving us a sense whether something like that could be done next, for next week or not, uh, and proceed accordingly.
Yeah. Well, we do have protocols for putting proclamations on the agenda. It's, um, in our council rules, requires three council members, or the mayor, the city manager. Our issue with this, I guess, is just logistically, we ask to have the agenda items submitted by Wednesday at noon for the following week, which gives our staff time to review it, put the agenda get, uh, together, get it published. Um, so now we're talking Thursday night. So we're kind of a day and a half behind our, our deadline. Um, so, you know, if someone came to me with an agenda item for next week, I would say, well, we're going to have to put it on for the, the 25th. And that's just the reality of the timing of this. And sometimes we do adopt proclamations after the fact. Um, it doesn't, shouldn't make it less meaningful. It's just that we didn't have it done in time and we may not have gotten notice. Um, you know, I'm not sure when this original email was sent, but I received information about it today. Um, so, um, you know, for our staff, um, logistically, we don't add items, um, after, especially after Thursday nights.
Uh...
For, for the next meeting. Unless it's, obviously, if the meeting's two weeks out, it would be a different story.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh...
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Uh, City Manager, um, George explained it pretty well. Traditionally, um, being in that, being in your seat, um, what we typically did is, uh, I, I would go ahead a lot of times and just get them on when I saw the thing. We didn't obviously have somebody in that position to do so. And he's right, the timing is off. It's also being selective. But typically I would have other council members contact me sometimes too, as well when they saw it. And we could cut some time off and we could discuss it. But I will say this, well, it's a valid thing. We also, and, and it needs to be discussed later, we, and, and create a process. We do need to be prudent because if, in some cases, when you're celebrating so many things at the same time, you can have four or five, and the, and the ones that are probably most prominent to the community get lost, is what I'm saying. Not taking away anything on this one. You know, I think, uh, in this consider, in this point of view, I think we could do something from the dais next week on our own, just validating it and, 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 um, offering the proclamation as a, as a solution and then, and work on a process in the future. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Harris.
Um, I'm attending, so, um, but apart from that, um, for what, regardless of how it sounds, I think a baseline should be that a member, a, a resident of the city, um, show up and, uh, present the idea. Because we are the city of Des Moines and it seems to me that a, uh, there, we represent constituents here. And, um, and so a member of our Korean community should, uh, be some of the person who proposes it as just a filter. Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Grace Matsui, please take a time.
Sure. I do want to clarify that this is for Korean-American Day, not Korean Day. And so there is a distinct difference. Uh, this is a 17th annual celebration. It's being held at Highline Performing Arts Center coming up on January 13th. Uh, I, well, I think it's great to talk about what our process could be moving forward. Um, I don't know that I hear compelling reasons why we can't put it on the agenda, given that I was made aware of this request for a proclamation yesterday, uh, af, after nine o'clock, I believe. And so unfortunately, that timing doesn't work out for our, um, agenda setting for the next week. Um, and it is something I heard that we can do after the event, uh, which would be fine with me. Um, but I hate to have this particular proclamation held up because we don't know what our own process should be moving forward. That's something that we can consider in the coming months.
Thank you. So I have a question. Uh, the date of this event is what, the 17th?
13th.
13th. So would there be any objection to, uh, would, I didn't look at any attachments on that. Was there a recommended verbiage for the proclamation attached to the email?
There's not one here attached to the email, but on their website, there are about six or seven examples, including from the cities of Tukwila, cities of Sea-Tac, the port of Seattle, um, I believe the city of Federway.
So, hmm.
Mayor, so if we had, if we had consensus of three council members tonight, we could put one of those proclamations on for the 25th.
That would mean that somebody had to work on, would have to work on that tonight after the council meeting, correct? A staff person? No?
It would go on the 25th.
Okay.
So we would...
So it would be after the fact. And, okay, so what I was thinking is whether, I was thinking of the possibility of just, um, assigning a council member to read the proclamation at the event. Um, but if we feel like a proclamation after the event is, uh, is apropos, go that route. Councilmember Mahoney.
I have a suggestion. I think, um, we, is, is, if council members can represent ourselves there, I think that pays an honor. And then we do the 25th as a follow-up. And then tell them that it's forthcoming. Is that acceptable? Um, Councilmember Grace Matsui?
If there are three folks who are interested in moving forward, that'd be great.
Okay.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, you're, you raising your hand to speak or raising?
I'm raising my hand to say, yes, that sounds great.
In agreement?
In agreement.
In agreement. I know, I am in agreement as well. Are you raising your hand to speak or agreement? Agreement? Right, looks like we're in agreement, City Manager, so.
Great. We'll put that on for the 25th.
All right. And you're also saying, in other words, feel free, we're, we're, by this agreement, we're, um, giving permission to council members in attendance to represent and say that this proclamation will be coming forward. Correct? Right. All right. If, uh, okay, Councilmember Oxster.
Yes, but does this, do we also have then a, an agreement to move forward on streamlining, you know, publishing this, making it apparent what the process is? I mean, is that something that's going to have to come back to the council and therefore will have to be on an additional agenda?
So that would be, that, are you making a recommendation that that discussion come forward on a future agenda?
I believe Council, uh, Member Grace Matsui already did that. Yes. And if she did, if they're, if you're recognizing that, then I will second it.
I agree with that. So would this be appropriate jun, uh, juncture to ask to put that item on a for, on a forthcoming agenda?
Well, I think we have, I mean, we have processes for putting items on the agenda. Those are in the council rules. And so we also have this process, which allows us to put something up for consideration at the next council meeting. So theoretically, what we should be putting on for the next council meeting is discussion of whether we should put the proclamation on, on a future meeting. But what I'm, what I'm seeing here is I'm seeing three council members who would like it on an agenda. I can put something on an agenda. The mayor can put something on an agenda. So I think both of you are in agreement. We'll put it on the next viable council meeting agenda, which is not till the 25th. So I don't think we need to, if there's a discussion about what proclamation should we bring forward, because the council does get a lot of requests, that's, that's really a question to the council of whether you want to support it or not, each proclamation request. So, um, you know, I don't think that's really a, a rules question or a policy question. It's just a question of does the council have three or four votes to pass the proclamation or get it on an agenda? So I don't think that we need to necessarily reconsider the process because we do have a process.
All right. Thank you. Am I good with that? Any other questions or comments on that? Hey, do we have any other items for new business? Any other, uh, any council member would like to bring forward another new item of business? Yes, Councilmember Oxster.
Yes. Um, the latest report out is that we are now, I believe it's, uh, 42% of, uh, snowpack and water for this year. And it being an El Nino's, uh, year, it looks like we are going to have, uh, possibility of a very dry summer again. And one of those problems that we have in dry summers is forest fires and smoke. And, uh, the fact that we do not have a, uh, emergency shelter that can deal with people, uh, who have, you know, respiratory problems and stuff. And we did have a, uh, an indication from the staff that would cost about $250 million to, or $250,000, excuse me. Whew. Watch those zeros. Uh, anyway, to fix the, uh, uh, HVAC system in the, uh, Activity Center, could we get it on the agenda to come back and look at whether or not that should be a priority for us to, uh, do that possibly this year?
Councilmember, uh, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, thank you.
Um, as I understand it, that, that already is on the agenda for this year. And specifically, wasn't there a direction to the staff to look for grant funding, uh, for that? And that's a question for the city manager.
Well, we're always looking for grant funding.
Yeah, but that's, that in particular.
But, and our public works, I, what I would say is that, that's, that would be a CIP project, capital improvement project. And we will be meeting with our municipal facilities committee, um, starting either the end of this month or the beginning of next month, um, where the committee will be looking at a work plan. And we'll also be developing the CIP project list for this year as well as the next five or six years to come. So I think the question of individual projects is generally dealt with by, through our CIP. So, um, which is a, a document that is created by the council.
Hello? Hello, good with that? And you, uh, do you have another question?
Yes, I was just gonna say granted. Uh, but the problem is, is that this is a, this is a serious situation that's coming up sooner rather than later. And I think it, you know, merits us looking at it, uh, expeditiously.
So are you recommending that, are, are you asking the council to, um, to take the subject and remount it to municipal facilities and ask? Well, we don't have a chair for municipal facilities right now, uh, to receive the, uh, recommendation even through councils, but...
I guess what I'm looking for is, you know, staff to come back with, you know, is this possible? And it would, it would be...
Well, staff did say it was possible and it was $250,000.
But the question is, where are we going to get the money? And so that's a question of asking, you know, finance and stuff, uh, and what areas of the budget that we can look at as far as possibly finding some money to, to put at that.
And they were, they were already tasked with looking for grant funding, correct?
I understand by, by the city manager, yes. Is that correct?
Yeah, so that's, all of that will be included in the CIP discussions that the municipal facilities committee is already tasked with. Um, we can look at when the committees will be created in the next week or so. Um, and the work plan will be formulated at their very first meeting. And so, um, maybe that's a more appropriate conversation at that time. Um, but we will be having those discussions in that committee.
Right. Thank you, City Manager. Yes, Councilmember Mahoney.
Uh, I just would like to add, I think it's the bigger discussion because, uh, Highline College and some of the faith-based churches and so forth already have facilities. So it's more about having a conversation about doing it well, doing it right, and using all the resources. Um, especially with our financial situation, uh, we should be resources, especially with our financial situation. We should be a little bit more calculated and methodical. So I agree that it should go to the municipal facilities. It could just be one of the first things on the work plan to assess whether we need to take action right away. I think all of us feel that our seniors are very important in particular. And if we need to make a move like that and, and adjust or cut something else, we'd be willing to do it. But if we don't look at it that way, we've short, shorted ourselves on the process and all options.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. It looks like the discussion is in our future. So, all right, any other, any other items for new business? Yes, Council-
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did, did we decide it was going to go to municipal facilities or we're going to put it on a future agenda for this council?
Municipal facilities discussion on their work plan for the CIP.
Are there three folks who are interested in putting it on a discussion for the council?
That is going to require, oh, okay. Usually for something like that, that's going to require, it's a commission of staff to do research and bring back information. So as, do we have three, three council members that would like to put that on an agenda? Looks like two. Okay, thanks. It looks like it's going to be remounted to committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving forward to councilmember reports. And we'll start at the beginning of the table and move this way. So Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Today is a bittersweet day for me. I enjoyed being mayor, but I'm also a realist. And I knew that my role was to finish what started by many council members out in the community, former council members, former mayors that started 10 years ago. I want to remind everybody the dire straits the city was in, and what's changed and where we are in position. We have new challenges, but we've come a long way. I feel that we've accomplished many great things. The waterfront, waterfront development that's going to happen across our waterfront, new parks. We do have sound fiscal practices, not, not discounting challenges. I think we did an excellent job of obtaining, obtaining grants. As the City Manager mentioned, we love other people's money. One of the things that I'm most proud about, and the staff is too, is leading us out of COVID with minimal impacts to the community. And we have worked really hard to continue to ensure Des Moines is a great place to live and the bad, and, and battle regional crime issues and support our law enforcement. But I also was tasked with confronting the tough things, if those weren't already, primarily a change in leadership. And I'm proud of the fact that I was able to move the city forward and pivot to our new direction we're going to go for. It was very difficult to deal with, with fear-induced propaganda and a personal desire to protect the status quo. Unfortunately, for me, the consequences brought criticism. And I've learned, if I've anything I've learned, it's politics is a very strange beast. Critics will always find fault, and so be it. I want to thank the staff and the councils before us for all their assistance in, in any, in my tenure and before I came. We would have not accomplished what we've done in the last couple of years without every one of you. So thank you. Again, as I mentioned before, one of the things I am, is a realist. And I recognize the next steps are crucial to our city's future. And I'm proud that I helped set this up, and I'm ready to pivot, as I've labeled it. I choose to be part of, I choose to be part of our move forward. And good leaders know how to be good followers. It's a mantra I've always believed in. So now it is time for that to happen and move to the next challenges. And those challenges, in my opinion, I simplified it to three. Bring a competent and well-qualified leader to manage our city. Tackle the rising costs of labor, materials, and inflation while ensuring public safety, providing the essential services, and at the same time, find creative ways to increase revenue that don't burden or at least minimize the impact of our residents. And third, ensure we move forward on the things within our control to spur development. We must generate new business potential and ensure adequate steps have been taken to ensure infrastructure is there so that our city is ready for the next chapter. At, at the end of every consideration I have made in my vote or decision, I, over the past six years, it has always come down to one question for me throughout my analysis and my questions and so forth. I come to this one question. Is my, is the decision I'm going to make the best one for Des Moines? I know in years to come, as families enjoy our waterfront, our city thrives downtown and throughout our nine neighborhoods, not one of us on the dais will be remembered for our hard work. And I'm going to simply point to the Marina and its development over 50 years ago. How many of you guys know who were the, who were the people that pushed that through to make it happen? But yet all of us agree it's a valuable asset today. But I don't, I don't, I'm not doing what I do to receive the credit or the criticism. And if you apologize, I'd just like another 30 seconds. But, but I never cared about that. I know our families will enjoy the waterfront, kids will play in the parks and fountains, our residents will enjoy fine dining and beauty, beautiful sunrises and sunsets at parks, and feel part of our community, which is what we really all want. Being one of you elected is a tall order. The benefits are endless hours, low pay, sleepless nights, armchair critics, and honestly, in a lot of cases, little appreciation to a thankless job. But I still love it, and I always will. Because in the end, I can say I left Des Moines better than I found it. And in a way, a better world. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney. Councilmember Oxger.
No report.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettin.
No comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. I met with Senator Kaiser and Representative Orwell last week regarding various airport things. And I wanted to mention where we're at with air quality monitoring and interventions at schools. Because what I care about are the next generations here. I bang on a lot about that because of my experience in the auto industry. And there is this scary correlation between aviation and auto. So we need to take action at the city level because it is not happening anywhere else. It is a fact that lead in auto emissions reduced the IQ of every person on the planet by about 10 points until it was outlawed in 1996. And it's so unbelievable, people don't, people literally don't, but please look it up. And that industry, my industry, did everything possible to slow-walk legislation for 60 years and permanently damaged the potential of generations. And airport and aviation, now the aviation industry have followed exactly the same playbook. If you don't measure it, you don't have to do anything about it. There is still no permanent aviation air quality monitor within 10 miles of Sea-Tac Airport. There is no monitoring at Woodmont Elementary and Seattle Schools. This must change. Every study that comes out, I bang on about auto because aviation emissions, every study that comes out now is looking statistically more and more like auto emissions. The more we learn about these negative impacts, including cognitive, they're going from statistically maybe, but being probable. And they're going to be shown to be the same deal. The hard thing to face up is that we do love the beautiful sunsets and people want to move here, okay. So, but we also have to be hard-nosed about the dosing we're getting, especially kids, right? You go from, you know, you're born here, you have 17, 18 years. It's a lifetime gift. It is in our interest to measure this stuff in order to get paid, to get compensated. Getting paid isn't the same thing as changing flight paths or reducing emissions, but it is the money that is the start. To that end, I encourage folks to sign up for our Sea-Tac Airport Roundtable. But I got to be real here, having watched it for five years. We've had people who show up and think they're going to change flight paths. But this, but before you do that, you have to do measurements and you have to get paid. And then you can talk about, you know, it's irritating and so on. But this is about the health and protecting our residents long-term. If that sounds like you, I encourage you strongly to sign up for the Sea-Tac Airport Roundtable at the city website today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I just want to say that I feel incredibly honored to be here, and I hope to earn the trust of the folks who voted for me in the last election. Thank you. Bless you. It's one of the very important and meaningful parts of coming to become an elected official, to take your oath of office. And one of the main tenets of that oath of office is to give yourself to this job impartially. And I hope that moving forward, that we as a council are able to find a way to work together and put aside some of the personal agendas, personal friendships, that really have influenced some of our work. And we embrace that part of our oath of office about impartiality. And I hope that we have the chance to talk about how we as a council do make decisions, do set priorities, and what values that we have that reflect this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace Matsui. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of things I just want to report. The New Year's Eve Burning Boat Celebration was a fantastic success. I don't know who else was there, although I think several people up here were there. But it was well-attended. I haven't seen attendance numbers versus last year's, but I think it was more, I think there was more this year than there was last year. Great move that they did to make the burning boat happen at 9:00 PM rather than at midnight, when some of us older kids might have started to fade a little bit. But, you know, it was, it was cold, it was a little wet. It really wasn't great to be outside. But yeah, once the boat started burning, it wasn't so bad. Generated a fair amount of heat, and it was a good time. And the community, you know, a lot of people were there having a good time, drinking their hot cocoa or in the beer garden or drawing. There was lots of drawing for the kids. There was a couple of food trucks there. I bought a thing of kettle corn that I'm still eating because I only eat a little bit at the time. But, you know, it's just, it was just a really, really nice event. And if you didn't go this year, keep it in mind for next year. It's a pretty fun time. We haven't seen, I don't think, each other since the tree lighting, which was also very successful down at the Big Catch Plaza. And it was nice seeing everybody there. I want to give my sincere thanks to my fellow council members for selecting me as the deputy mayor. You know, I also tend to look at things from what do I think is best for the city. I think that's the job that we've all been elected to do and to make up our minds about. You know, certainly, we have people that we agree with, people that we don't agree with. We have, you know, different levels of agreement with, with other people. And that's how a legislative body functions, in order to sort of move things forward. But ultimately, we need to be moving things forward and making this city better than we found it. That's ultimately, I think, what the goal is. And, you know, we've accomplished a lot of things. I have learned a tremendous amount in the last two years since I joined this council. Not just, you know, about how the city works, but the procedure, how people interact, you know, what is the right way to try to get things done around here. And, you know, hopefully that served me, that will serve me well as deputy mayor. And so I really do appreciate the support from all of my peers for, for that. I'd also like to point out that tonight was somewhat historic for Des Moines. I don't believe we've ever had a woman who was mayor. We know. We've had one, one other? Oh. Two. Oh, well, forgive me. I, I didn't realize that. Never mind. But we have elected-
But it wasn't you.
Yes. And now we, and now we have another.
Thank you.
And congratulations. It's, it's a good thing. We need representation on the council from all parts of the community and leadership as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate that, Deputy Mayor. Heartfelt, heartfelt and received. So, well, I promised a deep breath. So, just going to take that for a moment. I feel very humbled, honestly. As you can, and, you know, my faux pas tonight helped reinforce that humility. So, many people taking a position like this are, you know, often people say things like, well, I have big shoes to fill. I'm not going to try. Those big shoes are going to stand as a testimony to the good work that's been done. And, and where the wearer was and is irreplaceable. And I'm looking over at you there, sir. Irreplaceable. And so what am I going to do? I'm going to bring my own shoes, my own strengths with me to this table. It's no secret what the community would like to see here. While I continue to advocate, as I have from the beginning, for a safe, green destination community, I'm going to work tirelessly to build bridges, to promote collaboration, and elevate productive voices no matter where they're coming from. A few goals. I hope that we don't see just a steady 7-0, or a 4-3, or a 5-2. But I would like to facilitate, and, which means facilitate a demonstration that we have weighed issues honestly and according to their value. Always asking, what is just, what is best, and what do the people want? And to do this respectfully, not only towards staff, of course, staff and the community, but my colleagues as well. And to continually seek better ways to discover what the people do want. We have a lot of amazing wheels in motion, things the community is excited about and can be proud of. And we're going to have to work hard to keep these projects moving forward. We have new projects and new issues that are going to need advocacy coming up. I know we can work together. I know we can. So, before we close this meeting tonight, because I like to champion people, like I spoke of, I do have a couple shout-outs. Right before the holiday, there were some notable regional appointments for 2024. So Councilmember Mahoney was appointed to the Transportation Policy Board for Puget Sound Regional Council. Councilmember Harris was appointed to King County Flood Control District and Advisory Committee, also the Regional Transit Committee and Emergency Management Advisory Committee. Good work ahead. And back to the voice there, on transportation, we couldn't send any better voice out there. That's going to be a strong voice out the table for us. And then I was appointed to the Growth Management Policy Board of PSRC again. So it's a privilege to serve there. I'm looking forward to a great 2024. So our next meeting is January 11th. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So moved and seconded in, and we are adjourned.